Uh, we have a couple of commissioners for horny. So we just have a couple of minutes, so please bear with us. And we'll be starting in a little bit.
All right. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. We'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order. This is the Little Rock Planning Commission, September eleventh, twenty twenty five. I think we all know what September eleventh is. And just before we get started, how about we just have a moment of silence for the following? All right. So let's move forward here and let's get started with a roll call to determine a call.
Sure. Mike's not working, so I'm talking loud enough on the screen to allow anybody, just let me know. This is a roll call vote for September eleventh, twenty twenty five, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Bernard?
Present.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
Person?
Here.
Russell?
Present.
Samad?
Here.
Tremble? Baxter?
Present.
Vickers?
Present.
We have quorum.
Great.
So moving around along here, I'm sure all of the commissioners have got an opportunity to review the the minutes. And at this time, I would love to entertain a motion if there's not any questions.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as read.
Say it.
You have a motion in second, I give a roll call vote, chairman, please. Sidney Torrance.
Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Tremble? Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved.
All right, great. Moving forward, at this particular time, Jeremy, will you be giving the reading of the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. This is a consent agenda for September eleventh, twenty twenty five. The following items have been withdrawn or deferred. Item one, S nineteen six three, is being withdrawn without prejudice at the request of the applicant. Item four, S two zero zero two, is being deferred to the October ninth, two thousand twenty twenty five agenda at the request of the applicant. Item ten is being, Z one oh one eight nine, is being deferred to the October ninth, two thousand twenty twenty five agenda due to issues with notifications. The following is the consent agenda, or his following is up for consent approval. Item number three, S dash eight six seven dash R ten, Chennaw Valley, Phase thirty seven preliminary plat, north side of Chennaw Valley Drive at Oral Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the requested preliminary plat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D and E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. Item number five, L U two oh two five dash one six dash oh nine, Otter Creek Planning District, Land Use Plan Amendment from RL to AF, eleven six one nine and eleven seven oh five Alexander Road. Staff supports the proposed land use plan amendment in the Otter Creek Planning District from residential low to agricultural and recommends approval. Item five point one, Z six three nine six B, rezoning from R two to I one, rezoning from I two and I one to AF, eleven six one nine and eleven seven oh five Alexander Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested AF rezoning. Item number six, L U two oh two five eighteen dash zero two, Ellis Mountain Planning District, Land Use Plan Amendment from suburban office to neighborhood commercial. Twelve eight one nine Canis Road. Staff supports the proposed land use plan amendment in the Ellis Mountain Planning District from suburban office to neighborhood commercial and recommends approval. Item six point one, Z eight one two three dash A, rezoning from O three to C three, twelve eight one nine Canis Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested C three zoning. Item number seven, Z dash one oh one eight zero, rezoning from R two to C four, two Elrod Drive. Staff recommends approval of the requested C four rezoning. Item number eight and item number eight point one have been pulled off consent agenda to go to regular agenda. Item number nine, Z nine six eight zero dash A, Rock City Wraps. PDC revocation request, eleven four one four West Markham Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC revocation request. Item eleven, Z dash one zero one nine one, Haddock STR two, PDC four oh eight Booker Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDC rezoning subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the agenda staff report. And that concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Jeremy. We've heard the reading of the consent agenda. If there's any question by any of the board members, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we accept the consent agenda as read.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in the second, I get a roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald? Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Tremble? Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved.
All right, excellent. If your item was on the consent agenda, you are more than welcome to stay, but at this particular time, you may leave. Now, we're about to start our regular agenda here. And so we will give you just a moment to depart. And while we're doing that, while we wait for just a minute, we have two items on the regular agenda, and that's item number two, Z dash one oh one two eight dash A. And items eight and eight point one, we have on there. And then at the end of following that last, we will have the staff presentation for the ADU informational presentation. So at this particular time, we want to move forward and start with item number two. If the applicant is present, please make your way to the podium, that's Z dash one oh one two eight dash A. May I please have the reading?
Item number two, Z one oh one two eight A, Orndorf Number One, PDR, Southeast corner of East Twenty First Street and Bragg Street. This item went up on the August nineteenth, twenty twenty five agenda. The applicant submitted a revised site plan. So we're just going to go over what that was. Site plan is site plat to staff. The revised site plan and plat showed a ten foot wide sidewalk and utility easement along the south property line behind the proposed residences. The revised site plan shows a five foot wide concrete sidewalk along the south property line connecting with the sidewalk along Bragg Street. The sidewalk connect to the rear of each of the residences. The sidewalk should provide adequate access from the residences to the street to allow for trash cans to be taken to the right of way for pickup. Although the applicant has provided a plan for garbage collection, staff continues to have concerns with the fact that the applicant is providing no off-street parking and continues to recommend denial of this application.
Thank you for the reading, applicant. Please state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm Vernon Williams with Garnet Engineering.
All right, Mr. Williams, we do have several cars that are in opposition. You can, you can speak now and you can defer your time and
I'll defer my time.
Okay, great. So let me call the first card here. And before I do this, I will say for each of you, if you're for it or in opposition against your item on tonight's agenda, each side have up to twenty minutes. So if there's ten cards here, you know, essentially you have two minutes each person. Or if you have someone that'd like to speak for your group, obviously you can yield your time to them. So just wanted to let you know that. The first card we have here is, is it Jared Juw, Jewel or Jewel?
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Gerard Jewel. I rise in opposition to the proposed development of this plot. I'm one of owners of the land adjacent to it at seven twenty one East Twenty First Street. I would just leave it at that.
All right, is that it?
Oh. This opposition comes with it, I come from Texas to oppose this. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is Sharon Jewel.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Sharon Jewel. I was here last month when the Gannett Engineer deferred this until this meeting. And I informed you last month that I would be back this month. So I am here to rise in opposition to this property development. As my brother was saying earlier, we own adjacent property on East Twenty First Street to this empty lot as well as other properties in the area. There's no parking. This is a small plot of land, and I know someone said they lived in DC and they were used to row houses. But I've never seen a row house this narrow with five units planned for this piece of land. There is an alley between this land and our property, but it's not maintained or used at all, to my knowledge. Also too, if the Gannett Engineering is talking about street parking, this property is on East Twenty First Street, which is a bus line. So at the best, you might get three parking spaces, maybe one on the side street on Bragg Street. But if you're talking five units, even if there's a minimum of two people per unit, you're talking ten parking spaces, and I'm sure there's going to be more than that. So it is not adequate to say that individuals living in these five units congested together are going to have sufficient parking. And because there is, as you can see, I guess on the map earlier, there are two homes directly behind that empty lot. So there's no way to have parking behind the unit unless you go up three or four stories and, or you make the first level parking. So again, we rise in opposition to this. And unless the city is going to restrict the parking on East Twenty First Street and Bragg Street, there is no parking that will be sufficient for even four units or less. That's why I'm talking about five units. So again, I want to reserve the rest of our time.
Thank you. The next card is John Isom.
Good afternoon. Excuse me. Good afternoon, all commissioners. I rose in concern of the parking. My church is next across the street on Twenty First and Bragg. And we're there sometime from Sunday morning, Sunday evening, Tuesday evening, Friday evening. And we're already congested for parking. And we're looking for parking to be, to be made on the grounds of the church ground. But right now, we're parking on the street. And so my concern is, if what's, what is, what is the planning commission going to do about parking? What, 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 what is the plan? I, now I do, I do appreciate Orndorf for, for what he's doing to improve the, the appearance and, and climate of, of that, of that Twenty First Street. I do appreciate that. But still, parking is going to be a problem. I already see that. And I don't really, I don't, and I don't oppose it, but I don't approve either because I can already see that there's going to be some congestion there. That's my, that's my issue.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Williams, you can come back up to the podium here. Now, I'm sure you heard some of the opposition's concerns.
Yes.
This matter here, so it's this particular time, the floor is yours.
Yeah, sure. You know, we talked a lot, at great length last month about the project and the, and the on-street parking. You know, the one lady said that she thought there was only room for three cars to be parked in front of there. A parallel spot for a car is twenty-two feet wide. There's room for five parallel spots along Twenty First Street. There's room for one or two more on the side street, so there is room. If, if we were going to provide off-street parking for this, we would only provide room for one vehicle for, for unit. So, I mean, I, I think we've got enough spots there to park it. You know, I, I can't do it as eloquently as, as Mike Orndorf can, obviously. But he spent a lot of time last month talking about how much Little Rock needs workforce housing and, and, you know, the price point that he's going to try to bring these units in for to allow people options to own homes. And, you know, we, we, we think this is good for the community. I, I think everything that Mike has built in that neighborhood, which is a lot, has been good for the community. And, you know, we stand by what he's done. Not, not answer any other questions you have, but.
All right, so at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to any of the commissioners with any questions, comments?
So this is the applicant. One of the oppositions made a really important point about that being along a bus route. Were you guys aware of that and where are the stops? Because again, I always want to talk about seeing this in DC and Chicago, but you never have street parking where you've got a bus route for obvious safety reasons. Is that accurate in what's your, y'all's plan for that? Because that makes me really nervous.
I, I think if you pull up an arrow photograph of Twenty First Street, you see
I've got one.
Cars, cars parked along, along the street out there. I mean, so it's something that they're doing on other blocks. It's not like five cars next to the curb is going to block it more than one or two. And, I mean, when, when, when we pulled it up on the screen last month, you saw the cars. It wasn't a hundred parked along Twenty First Street, but there were ones parked on both sides of the street.
I mean, I'm looking right now, there's no cars parked on it. So that's why.
At all, on either side of the street?
Yeah, there's like one either side. I guess my concern though is with it being a bus route. Were you guys aware of that when you're planning this? Because that, that's a different dynamic than it's just being a street to park on. That's a different, are you aware of that and what you're planning for that?
Mike lives in the neighborhood, his development is a couple of blocks down the street. They park on the street there. I mean, we're aware.
Commissioner Hart, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, I would just, I think we're coming at this from the wrong place and staff, as they oppose it, is coming at it from the wrong angle. It's, so it's on a bus route, it's on a route for public transportation. And we're seem to all be assuming that everyone who purchases one of these units is going to have a car, and that just may not be the case. People do use public transportation in this city. And so, and people, and there is street parking. So I'm sort of looking at this from the perspective of, there may be homeowners here who, th- these are eleven hundred square foot homes, which will be affordably priced. And some of these homeowners may, may rely on public transportation and not have a car or two. So I don't think we should assume that, that every residential structure built in this town has to have a driveway and a garage. It's just, that's not the way a city, to me, that's not the way a city ought to look at things. I think we ought to rely on some public transportation and assume that maybe some of these homeowners may not have cars at all. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of investment, particularly in an area town that struggles to attract investment. So I, I'm going to be supportive of this based on the changes that the applicant made with respect to the sidewalks. And I, I'm, the parking, I guess what I'm saying is the parking is not a huge concern for me in this, in this particular analysis.
Thank you. Any other questions from, or statements, any of the commissioner, Russell?
Go ahead. So I actually do live in this neighborhood. I live right behind Pettaway Square. I'm not in support of this application, and Mike very well knows that. I made it very clear that providing one parking spot off-street per unit, which would be four, not five, Okay. would make this development palatable. And I mean, there's really not much else to say about that. I mean, the city ordinance is what it is. That one parking space per unit, if it was four units, because then they would have alley access, would make this a viable development. Without it, I don't. I think it's going to add too many complications to a street where people already drive too fast. That's why we have those speed bumps that everybody ignores, that they just use as ramps. I know because I'm one of them. It's, it's not smart development. It's not going to be good for the neighborhood as it's presented.
Thank you. So, Mr. Williams, I'm sorry, did you, frustrated, did you have a question? So, Mr. Williams, last time we was here, I know you said he, so I guess to be feasible for these five units versus four, I know that had came about. Was that just a problem of, of trying to make this more affordable to get these five units versus the four? I know when we talked about the land.
I mean, I think what we said last month is still true. It's, it's, it's not about affordability or making numbers work. It's about wanting to provide an opportunity to a reasonable, for a reasonably priced house to five people instead of four people.
Are there any other questions or comments from any other commissioners? If not, you have a question, Commissioner Bernard?
Not a question, a comment, I will say. I am also in support of this initiative and the concept. But to your, your comment, to provide this product to five people versus four, I think, considering where it's at the expense of the other residential owners in that area as well as the safety with the bus route, along with the staff's recommendation. And even, I, I guess the response to parking existing in the area, not considering the density of four or five people being dropped in this one area where there's already a, a issue with parking. So I'm, I'm torn because I do support the initiative and the concept, however, not at the expense with a few elements missing, I'll say.
Thank you. Vice Chair Baxter.
So, Mr. Williams, where, where is Mr. Orndorf?
He had some, an emergency, came up with his wife, and he said to take his kids to a, a school activity.
Sorry to hear about the emergency. I mean, I'm just going to try to the extent I can weave together all these different threads that we have as, as a commission, as commissioners. And, I mean, I, I think it's safe to say that we're all highly aware, and everyone in our city is as well, that we need more development like this. Because, tell me if I'm wrong, ultimately, the goal of this, these aren't going to be rentals. These are going to be sold to people who can get equity in their houses, correct?
Yes.
At an affordable, what, what will be the estimated?
I believe, I believe the price point that Mike mentioned last month was a hundred and fifty. I believe the price point that Mike mentioned last month was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
In terms of the parking issue, because even, and sir, ma'am, correct me, is it Mr. and Mrs. Joel? Jewel, J-E-W-E-L? Got it. And then Mr. Esim? Yes, sir. And I just heard, you know, the opposition, and this is why I wish Mr. Orndorf were here, and maybe even deferral one last time could be of interest. Because, I mean, these are legitimate and valid concerns about the parking, correct? And so in terms of putting a parking spot in the back, is that feasible?
I mean, the lot doesn't have the depth to put parking in the back. If you're talking about trying to do a rearload, or, I don't understand.
I mean, I've been looking at it right now. I see the proposed sidewalk. What is new in this schema or schematic from last month?
I mean, the big objection last month was the trash. And how somebody got the trash can from the back of their house to the front of the house for the curb.
So the only thing that was added from our discussion last month was the rear sidewalk.
Correct.
But it's still five units.
Yes.
Okay. And so last month, the date of our meeting in August? Whatever the second Thursday was. So it's been about thirty days. A little bit of water under the bridge. But I fairly remember that it was deferred. Mr. Orndorf made the election to defer. And the big issue for us at that time was the garbage, correct?
Right. And that's been addressed.
So in terms of the parking issue, going back to Twenty First Street. So currently, and help me with the proper terminology, is that street slotted or rated in such a way that there's on-street parking on Twenty First at this point in time?
I mean, Mike testified last month that they do park on Twenty First Street. And there's definitely enough width for a spot, for a spot in front of each one of those units for a car to park.
Okay, okay. And then this might also be of Mr. Jewel, Mrs. Jewel, and Mr. Esim. Currently, Mr. Esim Pastor, it's Solid Rock is your church, right? Bethel Temple, got it. In terms of parking right now for the residents, most of those houses do have driveways. And Mr. Jewel, Mrs. Jewel, does your house have off-street parking?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, absolutely.
If you could pull up the map that shows the... Okay, so I'm assuming the red stripe is the proposed units. If you see the building to the right, so you have the small, narrow alley, which is the width of maybe one car. Then you have an empty lot. There was a home there, but it burned down. And then you have the office there. So when you're talking about parking, if you see the red area of the proposed five units, there is two houses, literally, back to back. So there's no way you can do a driveway or do anything because the lot is so narrow in terms of bringing out trash or even creating parking. And that's why we're opposed to that because the length of that lot, currently, there's not a sidewalk. So, like you said, they added a sidewalk. There is a sidewalk on the other side of the alley on our property at seven twenty-one East Twenty First Street. So once you add a sidewalk on that section, that's gonna make the townhouses even smaller or more narrow in terms of depth. So unless you're gonna go up three stories or four stories, it's just not reasonable. And again, it's not reasonable in terms of parking. Because from the side, you may be able to get, as the gentleman said, one parking space from the side. That shows you how narrow that lot is. And yes, you want development in the area, but there's a lot more lots that are more suitable to put four or five units with ample parking.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
To answer your question, I'm sorry. We do have parking.
And y'all are at seven twenty-one, correct?
We're at seven twenty-one. So even when, I'm sorry, even before the other home burned down, there's space between seven twenty-one and the other building, which was the sickle cell anemia building. There's space in between, so you can pull in behind those units and park in between those units, as well as on-street parking.
Thank you. I'm gonna keep on asking questions, because, and commissioners, please interrupt me. But I just, I feel that this is an important issue in our city. And I feel that, you know, regardless of what happens after this, we have a duty to make a very informed decision. So, Mr. Williams, personally, I'm Vernon, right?
Yes.
Just wanna confirm. I had to ask Chair and Commissioner. Okay. In terms of the block from, is it South Bragg to the alley on East Twenty First Street? So currently, it looks like it's seven oh three. That's where those row homes are gonna be built.
Right. They'll be facing Twenty First Street.
So what is it? You can't park within twenty feet of a cross street, correct? Is that the law?
That's...
Plus minus.
It's a twenty-five-foot triangle.
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five.
Okay. So what is the length, and I don't know if you can see it, but what is the length of that area to that area in terms of feet?
Well, you've got a twenty-one-foot side setback, plus the road right away. And the road right away is sixty feet. I mean, so it's probably in the neighborhood of forty-five or fifty feet to the first...
How long, what's an average parking spot?
A parallel parking spot is twenty-two feet long.
Twenty-two feet. So how many cars can we get on that frontage?
Five.
Okay. And then, another question, South Bragg Street. Is that currently, is one able to park either driving north or south on Bragg Street? Neighbors, do y'all know this? Can you currently park on Bragg Street?
Yeah, I think they do, yes.
And there's no restrictions?
Restrictions is probably more of a city question than a Vernon question.
And I'm just gonna wrap it up at this. Fellow commissioners, I'm sorry for talking so much, but I think our city needs choice. And Mr. and Mrs. Jewel, I totally understand, and Pastor Esim, totally understand your concerns as well. But I do think the point that Commissioner Hart made with respect to also giving people transportation. Last question, where does the bus run? Where's the stop on Twenty First?
Not completely.
Neighbors, do y'all know? Where on East Twenty First? Got it. West of Bragg?
It runs both directions.
Right. But where's the actual sign?
Commissioner, it's, actually, if you pull up the map, it's like literally at the start of that intersection, going eastward.
But potentially, if this is approved, you know, ultimately, if the board approves this...
So, you're saying opposite side of the street?
Hold on, I'm sorry. I'm sorry about that, Mr. Esim. To keep order, we wanna make sure that, and we can't hear you, and we can't get it on the record. So unless a commissioner up here calls you, please refrain. Thank you so much. And please address the board. But we just still need to get him on the record for the habit, so, sorry about that, Mr. Williams.
He'd ask where the bus stop was, and the gentleman was just saying it was at the southwest corner of the intersection.
No, I got it.
So if this project, and then this is a question for full-time staff. If this project is ultimately approved, that bus stop, like in certain places in Little Rock and other larger cities, that would be marked out with diagonal lines, such that that couldn't be parked, but the rest of the street could be parked, correct?
That's correct. Usually, there's a marked-off area for the parking, plus a little bit more for the bus to be able to pull in and out. But the rest of the street, yes, would be allowed to do parking. I mean, it's similar. We do the same thing kind of on Kavanaugh, has that same issue.
My knowledge, there's no striping on Twenty First Street.
I mean, and I would like to add one thought. You're talking about pulling into a driveway like it's a better situation. But I would much have rather have people leaving from a parallel spot than people trying to back out onto Twenty First Street.
Oh, they wouldn't be. They'd be backing out into the alley.
Into the, oh, so you think you'd do parking on the side? Is that what you're saying?
It's the only place you can.
Do we have any other questions or comments? If not, I'd like to go ahead and, hold on, before we start, Brad, go ahead and...
Sorry for this non-sequitur here, but if you drive a white SUV with the license plate A S E C, you are blocking someone in. And I believe this gentleman is waiting for you to move your vehicle. White SUV? Okay.
Okay. All right, so I guess, Mr. Chair. In light of the fact that Commissioner, uh, Saad has to ask this about...
Can you wait for just a second while we take the vote, sir?
Sir, we really appreciate it. Thank you. We're gonna get to it if you can just bear with just a few minutes.
Actually, I need some time to consider. Can we just have a three-minute recess?
You know what? In light of, we need to get this car moved, we're gonna take a three-minute recess, and we'll be back here to reconvene. All right? All right, ladies and gentlemen, we want to reconvene here, the meeting. So let's go ahead and get started back on this. And before we have a motion here, Commissioner Brown has a question for staff.
Sorry, I'm having trouble with the buttons today. So just for the record, I mean, I love the idea of the affordable housing, but until the opposition brought the bus issue, I wasn't really, I was, didn't really understand there's an important issue here. There's a bus stop right across the street. You guys said there's striping that's supposed to be there, which is not there now if this were rebuilt. Assume, if this was approved, what's the process and who's responsible for that? Because again, having come from places where you have this kind of stuff, you don't usually have on-street parking where there is a bus route. That's usually just a no-go. And particularly, you don't have one near a bus stop, because those buses start up, they don't see it. Who's responsible for making that striping and making sure that it's clearly marked, so there's line of sight and all those kind of rules? Because I don't see that in the developer's site plan anywhere. Is that a city responsibility? Is it developer's responsibility? Because that's my big holdup right now. It's a safety issue, and a big one. So what's...
I was gonna clarify, under normal circumstances, what I misunderstood earlier on, and I was saying, in normal situations, what you would have is a parked-out, striped-out area to not allow parking in that situation. It's not in that situation. But to answer your question, who would do that? I believe it would be Public Works that would handle that. Well, actually, no, actually, the Metro Plan would probably be, Rock Region Metro, I'm sorry, not Metro Plan. Excuse me for that. They would be striping out that area, plus there'd be an additional area. Now, Public Works would usually be posting a sign saying that there's no parking in that area.
Okay, but I guess my question is, from just a safety standpoint, when does that come to pass? Because again, the affordable housing part, you know, I'm sold on that. The park, street or off-street parking, I'm torn on. But when we get to there, this being on a bus route, that becomes a big safety issue. What is the trigger to make sure that happens if this gets approved, I guess is my question? And how, because what I don't want to have happen, what makes me nervous, because again, just full disclosure, I've seen somebody get a pedestrian hit by a bus before. It ain't pretty, all right? So I'm a little sensitive to it, and I'll just fully admit to it. When you, what is the trigger to get those things addressed if this gets approved? And what's the timeframe on that?
That, I'm not certain on what the trigger of, where and when and how that would happen. What we'd probably end up having to do would be getting in touch with Rock Region and inform them that that needs to be something that's addressed. That that bus stop needs striping.
Yeah, there's a stop literally across the street. There's like two stops, stone, you know...
It would be something, we would just have to get in touch with them and have them address that to make sure that that doesn't happen. And then we would get in touch with, we would coordinate with Public Works to make sure there were signs up saying that there'd be no parking in that area on that side of the road. And that could be done much quicker.
All right. Did they ask your question, Commissioner Brown?
Close enough.
Okay. Vice Chair Baxter? The floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, it's four fifty PM, and I don't like taking more times on matters than should be taken. But this is also what we volunteered. This is what we raised our hand for. And this came up before, it's not just last month, but I think, was it six months before that?
Yeah, you're talking about the one in...
The one that was voted down unanimously, correct? But then it ended up going before, and feel free to take the podium again, Mr. Williams, if you like. Just so we can hear you on the microphone. The project six months ago that we unanimously voted down that ended up going to the board, what happened at the board with that project?
I think, you know, I don't fully know because Mike took care of most of that, because it was probably... I haven't gotten any negative comments at my office as a result of the letters I sent out for this project.
I think I answered your question, Vice Chair.
In light of everything that we've said, are you interested in deferring this one last time?
That was the text I was sending while you were talking, was I'm trying to figure out if Mike is, um, you know?
I mean, I think...
And also, Mr. Chair, just to let the commission know, um, there's a question about how many deferrals. This would be their final deferral. You can only appear at three meetings. This would be their, next meeting would be their third one. So it would be last shot.
Thank you on that.
I mean, even, and this is the last thing I'll say on this. If we look at the aerial map on this, and I wish I had some geospatial tool where I could measure that, measure that, measure that, measure that. Very simple. Point-to-point with the fifteen, twenty foot, whatever. You know, I'm a lawyer, not an urban planner, but you see what I'm saying. And then you divide the total feet within, say, a two-hundred-yard radius, two football fields.
You can right-click on the program you have there, and you get measure distance.
To that location, but this should be done by y'all.
Okay.
Because this is your project. And if you come...
We know how the parking works on our project.
So how many parking spots are on...
We have room for five across the front, and we have room for one or two on the side street.
On Bragg?
Right.
And you're speaking just of this and this?
Yes.
But what about this? And this, and this, and this?
Well, a five-unit apartment, you need to provide one parking spot per unit. And so we've exceeded, we've exceeded what's required. Yes.
More than exceeded.
Actually, one and a half, isn't it? Because it's based on bedroom count, staff, correct?
It rounds down to one. That's the way our code goes. It rounds down, so it's just one.
If there's seven and a half plus-minus spots required...
He just said there's five required.
Sorry, so five required, but if we look at, we think, two warm memorial football fields, two-hundred-yard radius, there's probably about four times that amount of available parking spots currently.
Probably.
Plus-minus.
All right, so at this time, I mean, if the applicant doesn't want to deferral, is that correct? You do not want to deferral?
What's gained by deferring?
Well, if you defer at your expense, then you will come back...
It's not the money. I just don't know what...
No, you would come back next month, and obviously, we would, um, you know, relook at, relook at your whole file and your whole application. Uh, but you do not have to deferral if you do not want to. We can move forward with a vote. It's totally at your discretion.
So Mike has told me through text that if it's the wish of the board, he's willing to defer, but, I mean, Mr. Baxter is the only one that I hear asking us to defer, and I don't really see the point. And I'm not trying to be ugly. But we've talked about this all. I mean, if there's something that can be gained by waiting a month...
No, the board can make a motion for deferral, but...
Yeah.
There is no motion that's been made, so if this...
No, I'm just, us voice talking. I mean, I...
Right. If this is a particular point, it's at your discretion. Uh, there was a deferral raised, and you had, I guess you text your client.
Right.
Uh, and if you do not want to deferral, or he does not want to deferral, then you can move forward and we can vote today. So I guess what I'm asking, you do not want to deferral, is that correct?
I mean...
Chairman Vickers, may I?
Go ahead.
Yeah, I want to clean up any confusion. Uh, one single commissioner has asked you to defer. Uh, it's completely up to you. Uh, there is no, uh, absolute, no condition that if you do defer that you are gonna come back with the circumstances changing, and then the commission's gonna vote for your application. Uh, and there's no guarantee that if you choose not to defer that they're not gonna approve it or deny it right now. So it's gonna be complete within your discretion. No one can put pressure on you. And if you do defer, there's no guarantee that you're gonna get an approval next month. I want to make that clear before you decide.
Yeah, I'm aware of that, and, you know...
Yeah, and just say, Mr. Williams, no commissioner up here is putting any pressure on you. So I don't want you to feel like there's any pressure on you.
If I may clarify, I'm not asking you to do anything.
Right.
I'm just trying to make it clear that I think there are some legitimate questions that this commission has that I also have that it would be very helpful for Mr. Orndorf to be here, for Mike to be here, and in light of the fact that he can't due to this emergency. I mean, even the questions that Commissioner Russell raised, you know, he and I sometimes spar, but ultimately, I think they're good questions, and I think the same thing with the neighbors and Pastor Isom. So if you want to submit it to vote, submit it to vote. I'm not requiring or requesting you to do anything. I'm just, you know, speaking openly. But ultimately, my last comment on this is I will vote for it. And neighbors, that's not me trying to, I hear your concerns loud and clear, but I do think ultimately, this is a question of who moves into here, whether they want to park on the street or not. I think Little Rock needs affordable development extremely and extraordinarily. So I think ultimately, it'll be in that benefit. So I personally will vote for it, and I'll leave it at that.
All right, so if, did you have any other questions?
Well, I just want to say, I don't necessarily, I don't want a deferral. I mean, we've had two very good spirited debates on this already.
I'm clear with you, Mr. Williams. Thank you. At the particular time, I would like to entertain a motion for this, and it has to be in the affirmative. Because the staff, I think, recommended for disapproval.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we accept staff's recommendations in File Z-10128-A with the exception of the recommendation for denial.
Yes. And do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Brown?
No.
McDonald?
No.
No.
Person?
No.
Russell?
No.
Samad?
No.
Treble?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion failed.
All right, the motion fails.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming on, Mr. Williams. And we're gonna move right along to our next agenda, item on our regular agenda, and that's item number eight, and eight point one. Uh, excuse me, Brad, we can do that, can we do that together, or do we have to itemize them out?
We can read both the staff reports at the same time. You'll have to vote separate.
Okay. Because I only have the eight, I guess all the cards says eight point one.
Right.
But yeah, okay.
And Hannah will do the report for number eight.
Okay. All right, so we'll have the reading of eight, and then we will follow right up with eight point one.
Correct.
All right, so, uh, if you can hold tight, applicant. No, you can stay right there. Stay at the podium. Uh, Hannah, could you please provide the reading for eight, please?
Absolutely. So, um, this is an application for a land use plan amendment in the Ellis Mountain Planning District. The request is going from suburban office to neighborhood commercial. The applicant is pursued concurrently with a rezoning application, File Number Z10190, which is request for quiet office district O1 to neighborhood commercial district C1. Um, this staff report is solely about the land use amendment change, which comes beforehand. The subject site is 1.5 acres of clear-cut land, largely devoid of mature vegetation. Um, recent improvements include new curb cut, gutter, and sidewalks along Canis, um, commercial entrances following Canis widening and improvements. Pedestrian facilities on the site connect to the Point West Single Family Residential Subdivision through Point, um, West Circle to the north. Um, all neighborhood associations notified prior to the Planning Commission meeting alongside the zoning application. Uh, the development principles of the Ellis Mountain Planning District include ensuring that roads are improved in a manner that are supportive of all modes of transportation and to encourage commercial uses at major intersections of arterial streets. The areas identified for commercial land use in Ellis Mountain Planning District are located at major intersections of arterial streets to encourage commercial concentrations and to discourage strip commercial development. Let's see. Um, the subject property is surrounded by various land uses. North and south of the subject property is designated for residential load density. To the east-west and southwest, the area is designated for suburban office. Uses with undeveloped, partially wooded tracks. And to the east of the subject property, along the south of Canis Road, is designated for neighborhood commercial use, and which you can see on the land use plan shown here with a 2025 aerial image. Staff finds that the amendment request is reasonable and appropriate, given the site's location, surrounding land use pattern, and proximity to a major intersection. The subject property lies at the corner of Canis Road and Point West Drive, both of which are high-order streets identified in the master street plan, making the site well-suited for neighborhood-scale commercial development. The proposed neighborhood commercial use designation is consistent with the Ellis Mountain Planning District's development principles. The proposed amendment would provide convenient access to goods and services for nearby residents, including over, uh, eleven hundred households within half a mile radius, while maintaining compatibility with the surrounding residential and office designations. Um, the site benefits from existing infrastructure improvements, including new sidewalks and access points, um, which do support walkability and connectivity with adjacent neighborhoods. And, um, to further improve walkability and active transportation access from surrounding neighborhoods, staff does recommend the applicant incorporate internal pedestrian pathways, um, which could be discussed outside of this, but could be considered in the zoning case. Staff supports the proposed land use plan amendment in the Ellis Mountain Planning District from suburban office to neighborhood commercial and recommends approval.
Thank you, Hannah. And we will have the, um, and the concurrent reading for eight point one. Jeremy, if you will, please.
Item eight point one is Z10190. It's a rezoning from O1 to C1. It's on the north side of Canis Road between West Point Drive and Atkins Road. The applicant proposes a rezone one-and-a-half-acre site located on the north side of Canis Road between Point West Drive and Atkins Road from O1 to C1 for future office and commercial development. The site is currently undeveloped. The majority of the trees appear to have been removed from the property. The remaining trees appear to be along the north and east property lines. Currently, access to the site from either Canis Road or Atkins Road does not appear to be developed. Properties in the general area contain a mixture of zoning and uses. Staff is supported, supportive of the requested rezoning from O1 to C1 to allow for the future development of the property. Staff feels the request conforms with the development pattern of this area. Canis Road is a minor arterial on the city's master street plan. Properties to the east and west along Canis Road contain a mixture of commercial and office uses and zoning. Staff feels the proposal will not be out of character with the neighborhood and will not have an adverse impact.
On the area. Thank you. Thank you for the reading. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Uh, I'm David Watkins.
All right, Mr. Watkins, uh, you do have a few cards here that's in opposition. If you would like to speak now, or you can defer your time and come back up afterwards. It's your decision.
Defer the time.
Okay, great. Please have a seat, and, uh, we will, uh, call the cards. The first card is Bagley Medor, if you're available.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good. The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Um, I live in Point West Cove, um, just on the north side of Canis. Um, it's pretty high-traffic volume. Um, only thing I'm asking for, I don't care about the commercial zoning, only thing I'm asking for is a traffic light. Um, it's very, very high-dense population. We have two big neighborhoods on the north and the south end of Canis with a mosque, uh, on the left side, and then we're getting a community center on the opposite side of the mosque. And with this commercial zoning coming in, we're gonna have more and more, uh, traffic. So the only thing I'm asking for is a traffic light.
Thank you. Thank you. Next card is Sadie Ali.
Yeah, my name is Sadie Ali, and I'm an entrepreneur and community leader. I feel a social responsibility to work towards the quality of life of the people in the community. The church, in 2013, Dixon Flake with Collier International developed a plan for Canis Point Office Space, where the church was coming, looking for a place for the community to reside. And we had a verbal commitment that this will be office park. The areas identified for commercial land use in Ellis Mountain Planning District are located at major intersections of arterial streets to encourage commercial concentrations and to discourage strip commercial development. Let's see. Um, the subject property is surrounded by various land uses, north and south of the subject property is designated for residential load density. To the east, west and southwest, the area is designated for suburban office. Uses with undeveloped partially wooded tracks. And to the east of the subject property along the south of Canis Road is designated for neighborhood commercial use. And which you can see on the land use plan shown here with a twenty twenty-five aerial image. Staff finds that the amendment request is reasonable and appropriate, given the site's location, surrounding land use pattern and proximity to a major intersection. The subject property lies at the corner of Canis Road and Point West Drive, both of which are high order streets identified in the master street plan, making the site well suited for neighborhood scale commercial development. The proposed neighborhood commercial use designation is consistent with the Ellis Mountain Planning District's development principles, principles. The proposed amendment would provide convenient access to goods and services for nearby residents, including over, uh, eleven hundred households within half a mile radius while maintaining compatibility with the surrounding residential and office designations. Um, the site benefits from existing infrastructure improvements, including new sidewalks and access points, um, which do support walkability and connectivity with adjacent neighborhoods. And, um, to further improve walkability and active transportation access from surrounding neighborhoods, staff does recommend the applicant incorporate internal pedestrian pathways, um, which could be discussed outside of this, but could be considered in the, the zoning case. Staff supports the proposed land use plan amendment in the Ellis Mountain Planning District from suburban office to neighborhood commercial and recommends approval.
Thank you, Hannah. And we will have the, um, and the concurrent reading for eight point one, uh, Jeremy, if you will, please.
Item eight point one is Z one oh one nine oh. It's a rezoning from O one to C one. It's on the north side of Canis Road between West Point Drive and Atkins Road. The applicant proposes a rezone one and a half acre site located on the north side of Canis Road between Point West Drive and Atkins Road from O one to C one for future office and commercial development. The site is currently undeveloped. The majority of the trees were to, appear to have been removed from the property. The remaining trees appear to be along the north and east property lines. Currently accessed to the site from either Canis Road or Atkins Road does not appear to be developed. Properties in the general area contain a mixture of zoning and uses. Staff is supported, supportive of the requested rezoning from O one to C one to allow for the future development of the property. Staff feels the request conforms with the development pattern of this area. Canis Road is a minor arterial on the city's master street plan. Properties to the east and west along Canis Road contain a mixture of commercial and office uses and zoning. Staff feels the proposal will not be out of character with the neighborhood and will not have an adverse impact.
On the area.
Thank you.
Thank you for the reading, applicant. Please state your name for the record.
Uh, I'm David Watkins.
Alright, Mr. Watkins, uh, you do have a few cards here that's in opposition. If you would like to speak now, or you can defer your time and come back up afterwards. It's your decision.
Defer the time.
Okay, great. Please have a seat and, uh, we will, uh, call the cards. First card is Bagley Medor, if you're available.
Hey, how are y'all?
Good. The floor is yours. Go ahead.
Um, I live in Point West Cove, um, just on the north side of Canis. Um, it's pretty high traffic volume. Um, only thing I'm asking for, I don't care about the commercial zoning, only thing I'm asking for is a traffic light. Um, it's very, very high dense population. We have two big neighborhoods on the north and the south end of Canis with a mosque, uh, on the, uh, left side, and then we're getting a community center on the opposite side of the mosque. And with this commercial zoning coming in, we're gonna have more and more, uh, traffic. So the only thing I'm asking for is a traffic light.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next card is, uh, Sadie Ali.
Yeah, my name is Sadie Ali and I'm an entrepreneur and community leader. I feel a social responsibility to work towards the quality of life of the people in the community. The church, in two thousand thirteen, Dixon Flake with Collier International developed a plan for Canis Point Office Space, where the church was coming, looking for a place for the community to reside. And we had a verbal commitment that this will be office park. And the leadership went and approved the site for the church. Now the business community grew and they decided to invest in a community center. If the groundbreaking was last month, we came up with three million dollars investment. There are a lot of kids, young people, today's world, we have a lot of issues with mental health. And we need to, there are commercial players coming in there, but we have people who wants to move to Arkansas, Little Rock. We need housing. We need a lot of housing. And the traffic count is, I mean, I'm glad city worked on getting that three lane. I'm so happy about that, but still we have too much of traffic. Now too much of investment is coming there. And we are looking to develop more housing over there. And we have Bowman Street a few blocks away. The Sams Club, Walmart, there is real estate, empty with nothing. Now we are creating another C one to add more traffic count. More accidents will take place. Now the community is facing with some nuisance. We reached out to Chief Hilton to see how we can address these issues. The young people, they don't have anything to do. The neighborhood, they can come, they can play the sports. They can perform in activities. This is what we want to bring to the community. And there is, like the developments are happening and I request the city, I oppose this thing, but you guys are, we have a lot of wisdom on this to, so I end here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card is, uh, Bob Harden.
Not to be redundant with anything that Ali may have said, my name is Bob Harden. I'm an attorney and represent Glory Properties, who owns that property where, which is immediately east of, uh, West Point Drive and is adjacent to the property here in question. And Ali several years ago developed this property for the church and there exists a church on this property. Um, you know, the congregation, this church are a lot younger than me and they have young children. And so they, there is concern, uh, about it being in a quiet, a real quiet place. I was involved when Nate, when Dixon Flake developed this and that was primary for the purchase and development of that property by the church, that it be quiet. Um, there are some things that, that are a little offensive to the, uh, owners for a C one development. As you know, C one allows for pharmacies and by law, once you allow pharmacy in and you have specifically provided in your regulations, you must also have medical marijuana dispensaries and growers that must be permitted there. Uh, for, you know, with any kind of change, there's other types of businesses, not just retail, but there could be some retail that is selling liquor. I do realize there are state laws that deal with both of those things. But what your decision is, is to make the decision what you want irregardless of what state law might provide and where state law might go in the future. But for this particular church in this particular situation, it's a very quiet area. As you can see from the map, you have primarily all residential south and north. It's a very unique place on Canis at that place where you have that. And you have, uh, a great deal of commercial on either end. Uh, we just think that this for quiet business is a good place. It's a good off, it's a good place to use it right now. Have no idea what the, what the owners might want to do with the property, but that would have significant difference on the position of the owner if they knew. But there's some things in C one that would be offensive, let's say, to the current owners of the adjacent property and for that reason they object. And I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Alright, applicant, if you will, come back up to the podium. And you've kind of heard, uh, some opposition here. And, uh, the floor is yours at this particular time, if you want to address any of those, uh, concerns.
Again, I'm.
The board would love to hear.
Sure. I'm David Watkins and I'm assisting Amin Pavini, um, as he is an agent for the landowner currently. Um, he's provided a response to some of the objections. They wanted to give you all a copy of it, so I'm gonna pass that out right now. While he's passing that out, I'll make a few comments. Um, the purpose of this, um, zoning, land use and zoning designation, um, the, the office zoning and land use is, is very limited. Uh, does not reflect the natural commercial growth and use patterns that are already in this corridor. Um, we're requesting this change to commercial, which is consistent with nearby development and the city's land use plan for Canis Road. Uh, this will allow for flexibility for future neighborhood oriented uses without committing to any type of business at this stage. Uh, some key points that Mr. Pavini wanted to point out, um, that we are only asking for a land use change and rezone. We've not submitted building plans, site plans for the development. Uh, the city's staff requested we only, um, ask for zoning and land use changes at this time. Um, any specific project, whether retail, service or mixed use, will require full site plan review and approval by the city at a later date, as you all know. Um, so we're not, um, presenting a type of commercial use at this time. Um, the C one zoning is intended for small scale neighborhood commercial uses that serve the community. Uh, the change aligns with surrounding development patterns along Canis Road, which already includes a mix of residential office and neighborhood retail. The rezoning ensures that when development occurs, it is done in a manner of consistent with city policy and oversight. Um, for some community consideration, we, we respect the neighbor's concerns and want to emphasize that no specific commercial use is being approved today. The city will have to carefully review traffic, drainage, landscaping, building design, uh, and all of those things when actual site plan is submitted. Um, so rezoning simply provides a framework for appropriate neighborhood commercial uses. Um, in the event there is opposition, which there was, we, we do appreciate the community's interest. Uh, at this time, our application is again only for zoning adjustment and land use adjustment. No construction or businesses have been proposed or approved. If and when a project is developed, it will go through the city's full site plan and permitting processes, which ensures public input and compliance with safety, design and neighborhood standards. This rezoning request simply brings the property into alignment with the city's long-term land use goals for this corridor. We prefer not to speculate on future tenants or uses today, as that would be premature. Right now, this is only about the land use category. Uh, so in closing, um, we respectfully request the approval of this rezoning from O one to C one and the land use amendment as it represents a natural, appropriate and city-supported transition for this property. We remain committed to working with the city and community during any future development process to ensure that projects meet all requirements and serve the neighborhood needs.
Alright, at this particular time, I want to open the floor up to any, uh, the commissioners with any questions or comments.
First, Hodges, go ahead. Um, I don't know, do you have the same map? Uh, is the, um, red colored property to the south of your property, commercial, zone commercial at the current time?
Yes, the.
Zone C three.
On the, on the land use plan, it is neighborhood commercial on the south and that's what we're proposing to change ours to. Okay. And then zoning wise, it would be C three and we're proposing C one.
Yeah, I have a, just a quick question. I think this actually may be for staff. On that, so, so there are like six homes there that are immediately to the north of this property. And I'm always sensitive to when we change zoning. Um, because those people built their homes thinking they would have an office in their backyard and we're, we're now talking about putting commercial uses. So, so what are the, uh, what would the building setbacks be and buffers be in straight C one zoning that would protect those guys back there?
Twenty-five feet plus a nine foot landscape buffer.
Correct. And there'd have to be a fence or landscaping, as he, as he stated.
Twenty-five plus.
Uh, which I believe is identical to the office.
Identical to, oh, okay.
It is. It's the same.
Mr. Brown, go ahead.
So, questions, first of all, a comment to the o- opposition and then a question for probably staff. Just so you know, the things you mentioned about alcohol and marijuana usage, there are state laws that prevent anything within fifty hundred feet of a church. So I would encourage you to be aware of that. But to staff, uh, this says C one zoning. Is this permitted uses or is this conditional uses or both? Or what's, what's the clarity on that? Because it just says C one, there's no clarity.
It would, it would just be zoned for all C one, whatever permitted C one uses.
Okay, but the conditional uses, which those other uses that they have, that wouldn't be that.
No, they would, they would, it, after the zoning change, they would have to come back for a conditional use permit if they wanted to do that.
And so the second thing to the applicant, um, again, having been through what these neighbors are going through, has there been a discussion with the, uh, neighbors who are opposed about saying, okay, you know what? We're gonna come to C one, but we're gonna take only these specific things and adjusting what's in that usage list to make sure they're more comfortable. Have you had that conversation at all with them?
Uh, that conversation not been had directly, um, but i- in this response that was passed out, um, there is discussion about, um, Mr. Pavini actually attends this, this, he's a part of this congregation of this church. Um, he, he's not heard any opposition from members of the church.
Okay.
Um, and, and currently as the church is building that, um, the community center, is that what?
Yes.
They're, they've, they've offered to, as this development comes on, to you, allow parking on this new development for the church and the.
Yes.
And the facilities.
So you're the developer and you're part of the church?
Yes, we are. I'm, I'm the part of the church also, and we have already offered parking for the church and also the community building that Mr. Ali is building already. So we have been committed to helping, uh, the church, the Ismaili Shema Tana as well. And we have already written inviting that we are nowhere concerning, uh, liquor store or marijuana business nowhere.
Excuse me, sir. Can you please state your name for the record?
Sure. Uh, my name is Amin Pabani. Thank you.
Thank you. That's your question, Commissioner.
Yes, sir.
Any other comments, questions?
Ms., Mr. Chair, for, for what it's worth, there was tra- traffic was brought up and I just pulled up RDOT's, uh, uh, daily traffic count map for this area and it's sixteen thousand per day.
Sixteen thousand per day?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Bernard?
I've got a question of clarity, uh, and forgive me if I'm alone in this, but I'm a bit confused, Mr. Ali. I know you're in opposition, but I believe we heard from the applicant that you're in support, uh, I guess unofficially, s- so just from my clarity, are you in support or in opposition? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what he said.
He said he's opposed.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, do we have any other statements, comments, questions from any other commissioners?
I got one.
I typically don't talk that much, but, uh, I'm still kind of confused on some things. You guys are in the same mosque, right?
Same congregation, yes.
Have y'all not had a conversation between yous?
I did. I already told all the leaders of the community, Mike. I have already discussed with all the pastors, all the community leadership of the thing and they are very supportive. Only Mr. Ali is opposing this particular thing. And based on the letter that we received today, uh, we have already given inviting that we are not in any way as Mr. Bob, I know him also, uh, on the liquor or marijuana, I am opposed to that personally as well. So I'm not going into any kind of liquor or marijuana business. In fact, we have always supported and the unity center that has been built, we have provided the parking space available until that, whether it is one year or more, even the construction takes a year, we are supportive of the members as because even my kids, myself, every day. My mom goes to church every single day. She looks forward for it. So I'm aware of that concerns and I'm always supportive of what I'm doing. So he's just opposing it, but everyone has a right of that, I'm with all, all due respect. And also one of the, uh, members that has rightly pointed out that we do need a traffic light. Because when the parking is on this side and the, the Ismaili Center is on the other side, the, the crossing is there. So if we can have a red light crossing, which we already, uh, requested earlier, that would be very helpful indeed for the safety, to increase the safety. Uh, also Canis is already aligned to get into commercial. If you see the opposite sides, it's already C three. And we are just requesting C one. Uh, in light of above, I, I humbly request each of the, uh, commissioners to please help us. Thank you.
Alright, uh, to answer the commission on that and just for the public as well on that, when a specific project comes in with the site plan and some of that, staff will require traffic study, which will then determine whether a light is necessary or not. Just to clarify that for everyone. Alright. Alright, if we don't have any more questions or comments, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, make a motion and file numbers LU two zero two five dash one eight dash zero one, as well as in Z dash one zero one. Nine zero, that the commission approves staff's.
We have to vote separately. Sorry. We have to vote separately.
Thank you, Commissioner Russell. That is correct. Apologies. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, a revised motion, uh, that in file number LU two zero two five dash one eight dash zero one, item number eight, that the commission approve staff's recommendations, subject to staff's, uh, conditions.
Alright, so we have a motion for item number eight and we have a second for this, uh, for item number eight. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Sir.
Yes.
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Tremble?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Alright, thank you everybody for coming out. Thank you, uh, for, um, for your application here.
Mr. Chair.
We have to make a motion for eight point one.
Yes, sir. Item eight point one, file Z dash one zero one nine zero. That the commission approves staff's recommendations of the requested C one rezoning.
Second.
I have a motion in a second for eight point one. May I get a roll call vote, please? Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Tremble?
Yes.
Baxter?
Aye.
Vickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved.
Alright, eight, eight and eight point one has been approved. Uh, thank you for coming out on this particular item. Uh, for even opposition, we thank you all for coming out. And we will give you a second here to depart. And moving right along, um, we now have a presentation for the ADU informational presentation by Hannah. So at this particular time, Hannah, the floor is yours for your presentation.
Perfect. Um, thank you all for, um, taking, I'm, I'm gonna try to only take ten minutes, um, just to catch the commission up on some important actions that have been taken as well as some new state law, um, in the case that, um, the commission wants to consider what's in the packet that's been. Okay. Go over the items in that packet. Um, just for your, your own kind of personal deliberation, this is not, um, a voting item. It is, it is simply an informational, uh, presentation. So this is about accessory dwelling units. Um, I'm not gonna read out all of this, but you are welcome to also send the presentation out. Um, but a bill was passed, uh, fifteen oh three, now Act three one three, um, which requires all Arkansas cities to update their zoning codes, um, by January to allow at least one accessory dwelling unit by right, uh, on any residential lot with a single family home. Um, the city, like all cities, have, uh, are required and mandated to respond to this. Um, at that time, we started a community engagement campaign in July. Um, that campaign went readily into the state law going into effect. There was a lot of unanticipated, um, inquiry in the state law and, um, just to best serve, uh, development and, and residents, providing a clear kind of standard moving forward, we went ahead and, um, by emergency clause, uh, submitted an ordinance to the board so that we can go ahead and get in compliance with state law and, um, hopefully reduce or mitigate any, any future issues. That does not mean that the case is closed, um, any, any, there can be any zoning change or any change to, uh, municipal, uh, zoning law. So, um, with that, um, in case you don't know what accessory dwelling unit is, it's a self-contained and independently accessed living unit that includes its own cooking, sleeping and sanitation facilities. It is by definition accessory to another, uh, primary structure. Um, and if you are interested, AARP has significant literature on this topic. The initial planning process, um, started out, um, as such, um, with the intent of coming to the planning commission and then going to. um, with the intent of coming to the planning commission and then going to the board. Um, this shows the pivoting that happened during that time, um, when the ordinance went into effect. So right now we're in September, planning commission presentation. And again, everything that we have learned from start to now is, is in that packet for you all to, to look at and consider. The ordinance has already been passed, um, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna explain some of that and then definitely take questions. Um, cause I think that's probably the most confusing part of the process. Um, so just to, just to go through the state law, um, it does require municipalities, um, to allow by right, um, an accessory dwelling unit by certain definitions. The A- the act aims to address housing attainability and availability. And this is not an act that talks about HUD housing, uh, section, uh, one oh, one oh eight. I always get section one oh six from historic preservation messed up, but that's just me. Um, and so this is about housing attainability. Um, it goes into effect August fifth, August fourth, um, and that is where that, uh, kind of pivot came from. And cities are mandated to have something in their zoning code by January first, which we have already met that condition, which means we have some breathing room now. So the act requires that, uh, these units, they can be attached, internal or addition and detached ADUs. Cities do not get to, um, get to kind of have a, um, a determination for against either one of those types. And cities cannot require that residential occupancy meet certain frameworks. It's very open. So this is just a quick image of what cities cannot and can regulate that are kind of hot topics. Um, we cannot look at aesthetics, lot size, occupancy type, parking utilities in general. Some of these go into higher detail, so, um, just go ahead and, and, and read that state law and read our ordinance. And I'm happy to answer any questions at any time from any commissioners, if y'all just wanna give us a call. Um, what they can regulate is setbacks, but no more restrictive than what is applied to the single family house. Height and size, no more than what is restricted to the single family house. Lot coverage, um, same as what was said earlier about the single family house. It does not relieve anybody from meeting building safety and fire codes. And this does not require that cities allow short-term rentals by right. Has nothing to do with short-term rentals. But that is a hot, you know, question we got during community engagement, so I just want to clarify that concern. So these are, these are, I'm gonna go through a couple of quick things that we talked about our community engagement meetings. Um, and just, I imagine they're gonna be your frequently asked questions as well. So, um, does the law mandate cities must allow ADUs to be used to short-term rentals? No, our current ordinances on short-term rentals absolutely apply. Bills of assurance, um, this law was a mandate to cities. It was not a mandate to private residences. They are allowed to use their bill of assurance and take that forward and, and go through the legal process if they do not wish to have these in their neighborhoods, if their bill of assurance doesn't allow them. And that is a private matter that this commission nor the board and the city in general can, can do on behalf of, of a private covenant. Does not allow RVs and trailer, travel trailers. These do not meet a number of building codes, um, for this purpose. So if you have any constituents or neighbors that are concerned about this, you know, you can, you can point them to this. This part of this presentation is online and, and we can make it more available, um, but no. Parking infrastructure, so we are not allowed to require that additional parking be provided for an accessory dwelling unit beyond what is already required for the single family home. So single family home, it's one. We can't acquire two just cause it has an ADU. So this does, this could impact infrastructure depending on how many are built. But that is something that we get to continue to study. But it is a concern because it takes away, a lot of this takes away what cities have been able to do. So that's one of the primary concerns of this bill from municipal standpoint. Public infrastructure as far as water, um, and other public infrastructures, we absolutely can regulate how our streets are used. If we, um, for the safety of others, do not require or allow parking on a minor arterial, that doesn't mean somebody gets to park on the minor arterial. There's no parking there. They'll have to provide parking through other, other means for the safety of their, of their, uh, residents um, and renter or user of the, the type. Um, it does not mean that applicant is relieved of stormwater management if it becomes applicable. Um, and cities are allowed to require a will serve letter. Um, lots of neighborhoods in Little Rock that are curvilinear suburban street patterns have lower pressure, uh, water infrastructure. Um, so there is some allowance in that and that's gonna be decisions made by C A W and Little Rock Water Reclamation Authority. Um, one thing that we are doing, cause we are very concerned about this, is just, um, addressing an emergency response. If you hear inquiries about how is nine one one gonna get to my house? How is the fire department gonna get to my backdoor unit, um, my granny flat, my cottage, you know, my rear cottage? Um, we, we already addressed them in the system, but we are relooking at providing addresses and correcting um, where some have been missed, just, you know, this is an old building pattern. This is not new. So we are relooking at that and working with, uh, PAGES, Plasky Area Geographic Information System to just kind of better serve with data our residents for response times. Um, and just for the property owner, if you have an occupied ADU, um, and you've put your own address on it, that is not the address that's in the system for nine one one response. So please contact Public Works or just call them to just double check that you are, you know, those response times can be very important for, um, your renters and the people you're responsible for. Um, there's some information on rental registration still required, um, still asked for rental inspections still available when there are rental units. Um, I won't dive too much into that, but that information is available for people. If you hear anybody, just point them our direction for that. The new ordinance, this is ordinance number two two six four seven. It's in your packet. The main things that it does, it establishes definitions and development standards for accessory dwelling units allowed by Act three one three. I do want to remind the commission that these are not the only type of accessory dwelling units that go through our process. If an applicant wants two accessory dwelling units, one of them may go through this process, another one may seek a conditional use permit. So we are very aware, self-aware of our own zoning code in this. Um, and did not just erase, um, the laws that were already in place, but modified them to meet state law. Um, an ADU can be reviewed and permitted concurrently with, with proposals for a single family dwelling, but not can be occupied before the primary dwelling is complete. This is a standard practice that we already, we already practice. Basically, it's kind of restates that, you know, in the case that you want a single family home and an ADU, can just build the ADU and then stop building. So it can't be occupied at that time, cause it's not technically a primary structure. We don't have that happen very often, but it's just, it's just a very traditional practice. Um, the city has decided to require will serve letters, um, as required, uh, per permit submittals. So, um, this, uh, this is an addition. We are choosing to use as part of the state law. Some other neighboring cities are not. I think this will teach us a lot. Um, so it's just another way to kind of safeguard some of that infrastructure and help the property owner understand upfront if there's gonna be a water pressure issue that would impact the feasibility of their project. So it could be good on both ends. Um, one of the main pieces of the ordinance is, um, in order to access the by right approval, you must meet specific development standards that are compliant with the state law. Um, mostly, um, the ADU needs to be built within the setbacks of the district. Many ADUs are detached in the rear, um, in this, those would still either go through variance or conditional use permit depending, um, if they cannot fit within these setbacks. Um, and this is how, this is the ordinance that was passed. So whether attached, detached or internal, the units must conform to the setbacks of the applicable zoning district equal to the state law. Yes. It is almost zoneless, so it's very difficult to fit within our framework. It, it allows ADUs to be built, um, alongside single family homes regardless of what zone they're in. So that's why they're pretty, it's a pretty unique law.
Right, but I'm, I'm asking if this is gonna provide qual- or if this is gonna create conflict between existing, other existing residential zones that allow duplex by right.
No, everything that's.
So a duplex can be built as an accessory structure outside the building setback lines because it's accessory.
Whatever is currently allowed in a zoning district is not being taken away.
Okay, okay. That's, that makes sense, thank you.
Um, there's a section on applicability in the, uh, ordinance.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, uh, area and size, um, we stuck straight with the state law. Lot coverage, uh, straight with the state law and height is, uh, the zoning district. So we can be no more restrictive than what the applicable zoning district is. Um, just kind of a look back on what city's half, staff has been up to. Um, in July, we created a, uh, website. It's still active. Um, I misspelled it on there, but it's supposed to read tinyurl.com. You can also just scan it. Um, we did start a community focus group. Uh, those are the members that have been in there. The, uh, planning commission chair and vice chair have been in attendance to those meetings, um, that have been very helpful with that discussion. Um, we have also utilized the, um, special interest of our other cha- uh, commissioners, the chairs from our other commissioners, commissions, sorry, city commissions. Um, and trying to seek advisement from our, our, our peers. Um, we also had three small scale developers who do both infill and rehabilitation. So, you know, we feel like that community focus group is kind of well-rounded. Um, we did release an, X, ADU community survey. That was from July seventeenth to August twenty fourth. We got two hundred fifty-nine response, respondents. Um, there is in your packet, I think at the back, those are all of the results of that survey, including all of the comments. Um, and those are very interesting, so. Um, there was an ADU community meeting on August twenty-fifth at six P M. We had seventeen attendees, ninety-three percent of them were residents. And then we've also included a, um, I misspelled it as well, but Slido results. So we had some interactive, um, interactive polling, so it can kind of tell you who, who showed up and how they feel. Um, and then I'm just gonna run through the results of the survey, but you are more than welcome to, you know, continue looking at it. But at large, um, seventy-eight percent of respondents were Little Rock homeowners. Eighty-three of respondents generally supported ADUs. Sixty-seven percent of respondents favored detached ADUs in their neighborhood over attached or internal. Um, and that map just shows you kind of where people self-chose the location of their response. Um, so this is just that homeowner is most of the people who took this survey. Most people were aware of accessory dwelling units when taking the survey. Um, after they were done, it shot them back to the, the, um, the website, you know, to get more informed about it. Um, this is how people feel about allowing accessory dwelling units in general. Um, this is where we're getting that eighty-something percent from. Um, thirteen percent do not support ADUs. Um, or, and four percent are unsure, but the rest in, in some scenario were generally supportive. Either directly supportive or by certain conditions. Um, there's that just graphically. Um, top two to three concerns, absolutely absentee landlords. I think, um, when you put this on any survey, everyone's gonna click that. It is of top concern, so it could be a little misleading, but um, um, that was one of the top issues and then parking and traffic. And then illegal construction and use. Top two to three benefits, housing for aging pa- aging parents or adult children, affordable rental housing, also think attainable rental housing and income support for homeowners. Um, this, uh, says, uh, the most favorable, uh, location for an ADU, um, was detached. This included folks who were not supportive of ADUs or very concerned. Um, so it kind of ran in line with that. Um, kind of cr- across feelings. And this is just people who are generally interested in building, um, and what conflicts are, are, you know, just their considerations. And then this was just a fun build your own ADU. We don't get to tell developers exactly what they need to look like. We can incentivize those things, but I think this gives a good picture to folks who want to build these, to rent them out. Just what their neighbors are actually interested in, um, residing in. So Little Rock is very much a, a porch town, so. And then there was about, uh, a hundred and twenty-plus community comments, um, and those are all listed out. And then if, um, we are still collecting feedback, so, um, just point folks in our direction, point them in, in my direction. And, um, we are happy to continue to take additional input. And then final slide, um, what's up next? The results of the community engagement process, um, are definitely in the department's hands and will inform any, any future ordinance or zoning code amendments. Um, we are continuing, continuing to actively take a public input. And we are continuing to study the use and its impacts, uh, via the state law, cause again, this, these are not totally new, uh, uh, unit types. They are, they're age-old and, um, we are working on improving addressing actively and educating residents and property owners and, um, considering development process improvements. So in that little Slido response, get, um, some people gave us some ideas on how we could assist in that. So, um, and so I just wanted to also answer any questions.
Are there any questions for any of the commissioners?
Quick, quick question that this might be a stupid one. Um, if I was a developer, could I build a primary, uh, home and then rent that out? And then also build an ADU in the back and rent those both out separately?
Yes, that, nothing, nothing about the state law or the city's code would prohibit that except for just meeting, you know, building and safety code requirements and, and all of those things, so.
If there's an existing accessory, well, we consider accessory dwelling on a property, would this, would this, would they be able to add another one if it's, was built prior to this law? Or is this covering ones that are already there, going kind of similar to Mr. Russell's question?
Um.
Or is that even clear in this, in this law?
Well, some thi- some things we will see, uh, get determined later if we come, uh, in confrontation with them. And, um, I'll hand it over to Sean. Um, in general, anything that is, um, existing right now that was previously approved by the commission and it's gone through building, permit review and everything is, is legal. Um, anything built illegally moving forward will be considered illegal. And, um, if somebody already has an ADU on the lot and they want another one, um, I think they've already utilized the process for the state law, even if the state law wasn't in effect at that time, and they would want a second ADU. So they would go through whatever the zoning district requirements are for that second ADU.
Yeah, and this is relatively new and I know, um, Vice Mayor Wire, I think you may have been in contact with some of our legislatures. Did you wanna speak on any of this? Cause I know, because the reason why I say that is a lot of the questions that you're getting ready to answer are questions that are very debatable, like for example, did you have to have a, an existing structure or the primary structure built first and then make an ADU? And there's a strong opinions and I think, and I don't wanna misspeak, but there are opinions that you can build the ADU at the same time you build the primary structure. Or you have to have a primary structure and then build the ADU.
Let, let me give you a clear, like, for example, up in the heights, there's a bunch of houses up there that they've got an attached garage. Over that attached garage, they've got an apartment and that was built long ago. Is that considered an ADU or is it just a part of the house? Do they get to do another ADU in the back? That's what I guess is, is, is the fuzzy part. Gotcha, okay.
They have the option to do that now. And she's gonna keep me straight. They have the option to do that, but, uh, they have to follow all the safety codes. Um, I'm, I was, I objected to the ordinance that came before the board. I was the only one voted against it. And my issue was that the intent of the legislature from the people that I talked to was that you would have an existing unit and you could add an internal, um, and a, um, external and what's the other one Hannah? Internal ex- attached. It, okay, detached. And, uh, I had a practical application that was going on where I felt like a developer was gonna build a brand-new primary and ADU at the same time. North Little Rock identified in their ordinance that you could do that to an existing unit. Our city attorney ruled differently and said it didn't make any difference. So that was my objection to it. We don't typically look to North Little Rock for a lot of things, but I happen to agree with them on, on this particular issue. So, um, I think there are people. So I think there are people that are concerned about what's gonna happen in their neighbor's yards, those kinds of things, but I'm happy to know that anything that's on wheels will not be allowed to go in a backyard. I'm really pleased about that because initially I thought that was gonna be an issue, but that was my objections, as well as, I'm not sure why the legislature decided to do some of the things that they did, this being one, removing the ETJ, another. That was for our friends across the city lines to help protect the development to go in on that, and then ADUs. I think there could have been some other language, some more definition that would have helped our legal staff and planning staff to craft, to craft maybe a different ordinance. And I'm not sure it's over. I'm hearing that something might happen in January to try to help us out on that. So that's, that's my thoughts.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you for letting me weigh in on this one more time.
Absolutely. And, and so the bottom line is, there are a lot of questions. This is highly controversial. The, the Act can be interpreted multiple ways, and I'm sure multiple jurisdictions will apply it in multiple ways, and, and I'm sure this will at some point hit the courts, and it will be a case of first precedent, and it might be Little Rock that leads the way. I'm not sure.
Well, to answer, to answer the question, there, there is a section, if you look at page three or four, under variances, the mere fact that the placement of an accessory dwelling unit is to be placed on a location previously granted a variance for a non-residential use does not guarantee that any variance of an accessory dwelling unit will be granted. Basically, what that says is, if you've done something before, if you've applied for something before and been granted, doesn't necessarily mean that you can take that and convert it automatically to an ADU. You still have to go through the requirements of the ordinance. Now, in areas like the Heights and Hillcrest, where we do have lots of essentially illegally-built, but they're, they've just been there forever, rental garage apartments, whatever, there's already a process for that, and it's the Board of Adjustment. So, I mean, the city already has processes to deal with these things. This is just allowing ADUs, like Hannah said, zone-less, like it, or, yeah, zone-less, where if it's R1 or 2 or 3 or 4, doesn't matter, if it's a residential zone, you can by right build one ADU. If you already have an ADU, well, that's one, so you're done. If you want two, then you have to go through the variance process, which is gonna be something different entirely, outside of this ordinance. Hope that helps.
Any other questions from any other commissioners? If not, thank you very much, Hannah, for the presentation, it's very informative. And before, last month, I spoke on creating a sub, subcommittee to look at the bylaws and/or, you know, different policies, zoning, et cetera. And I know we had one commissioner, Commissioner Russell, would like to be on that. Before you leave today after the meeting is adjourned, could you maybe get with Torrance or one of staff, we're gonna, Torrance, I just want to create a sheet, just make sure you get the names, email, I mean, we already got that, but we get the names, and then what we want to do is put together, you know, that subcommittee now that we, you know, you kind of identified if you wanted to be on it. And then we want to get on that to really dig deeper, just, you know, really get into discussion and engage, so we can set up a time, a date for everyone, maybe a Zoom call, maybe in person or collective of their, thereof. So if you want to be a part of that subcommittee, at the end, please put your name, sign up.
Yeah, we'll want to, we'll want to set up working groups, but I think it, if there's more than two, it does still have to meet public notification requirements, so it's probably gonna have to be in-person meetings would be my guess.
Yeah, so we, we'll get that set up once we identify who all would like to be on there. It's not mandatory, ladies and gentlemen, but-
Is that what this is? Or is this just a sign?
Yeah, so after the meeting, just, you can get down here with staff, one or two, and we will get the names, and then we will move forward from there to, everybody get a good date and time for everybody that works for them to have further discussion on it, okay? Our last new item in our citizen communication, we have Stacy Fletcher. If you're present, please make your way to the podium.
Stacy, can you read what I'm reading? Hi, I'm Stacy Fletcher. I live in the Heights neighborhood, and I'm here on behalf of the Heights Neighborhood Association as a point of information to bring awareness to you all about a resolution that was adopted. Whereas, I guess I'll wait till that gets all passed out, and I'm probably sure when. Whereas, the Heights Neighborhood Association worked for several years to create the Heights Landscape Design Overlay District, which the Little Rock Planning Commission and the Little Rock Board of Directors approved in 2019, and which we have greatly appreciated. On October 2nd, 2019, Mayor Frank Scott Jr. and City Attorney Tom Carpenter signed ordinance 21787 that amended the City of Little Rock Code to include the Heights Landscape Design Overlay District as Section 36-434.46 through 36-434.51. Since the ordinance became effective, 50-plus houses have been built or are under construction that violate the Heights Landscape Design Overlay Regulations. The Building Codes Division routinely issues certificates of occupancy for houses that violate the overlay regulations rather than delaying issuance until statutory requirements are met. The Planning Department has only issued a few citations for violations of Sections 36-434.46 and 36-434.51. The Board of Adjustment rubber stamps variances that allow builders to violate the overlay regulations because there is not room for appropriate landscaping. The Heights Neighborhood's historic tree canopy is disappearing at an alarming rate. The Heights Neighborhood Association reaffirms its commitment to the approved Heights Landscape Design Overlay District and requests that the Building Codes Division, the Department of Planning and Development, the Board of Adjustment, and the Parks Department work together to enforce this ordinance that is mandatory under city code. It was resolved this 20th day of August 2025. Not to all I have. Thank you.
Thank you.
If I can, Commissioner, I'd like to answer a little bit on this. First, I appreciate the Heights Neighborhood Association coming in and saying something about this. I will say this is more of a planning and development department issue than it is a planning commission issue, but I will say, I mean, we're aware of the issue. We've actually had a, a little bit of flux in our landscape specialists, and now we've got that stabilized with a great person back there, Ms. Deborah. And we're addressing it in the sense that now, I believe, starting Monday, we will have a review process just for landscaping requirements so that we can address this and try to solve any problems. And I know Deborah's looking into all 50. I believe you've provided a spreadsheet, and she's checking into all of those, but we're doing the best we can to try to correct this issue and, and no longer have it be a problem.
Thank you, thanks very much.
All right, with that being said, do we have any other new business? If not, ladies and gentlemen, this meeting is adjourned.